All right, folks, I think we're ready to get started. Thank you all for coming this evening. Called a meeting to order at this time. We're glad to have our police chaplain here this evening, Mr. Greg Page, and he's going to offer our invocation for us. So, Mr. Chaplain?
Council members, Mayor Pro Tem, citizens, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. Whenever I was asked to do this tonight, I always think, you know, what do I say? Other than just opening prayer and, you know, it reminded me of this Psalm which everybody knows about. It's the one that's most used for anybody in the world, especially when you're having troubles or problems. It's the Psalms, the 23rd, and I'll read it quite quickly. It says, "The Lord is my shepherd; there is nothing I lack. He leads me down to green pastures; he leads me beside the still waters. He renews my life. He leads me along the right paths for his name's sake. Even though I walk through the valley, the darkest valley, I fear no evil, for you are with me. Your rod and your staff, they comfort me. You prepare a table before me in the presence of mine enemies; you anoint my head with oil. My cup runs over. Only goodness and faithful love will pursue me all the days of my life, and I will dwell in the house of the Lord as long as I live." So, of course, everybody knows this was written by David, a little boy that was a shepherd boy, and was anointed a king and then went back out to the fields to be a shepherd boy, and, you know, it wasn't his time yet. And I was thinking about what's coming up for the town of Runet Rapids soon is having another police chief come along, and I was thinking about our police chief that's here now. And, you know, as I was thinking about that, I thought, you know, there's a David in all of us. There's a David in all of us. When that time is for us to be able to come to stage is something that I don't know and you don't know, but you will know. And David came to the stage and killed Goliath as a little man with a little stone. We all know the story. And, you know, in being in Runet Rapids, just the small time I've been here, I'm being very thankful for the community and the people here. I have seen the chief come aboard, and he has been a David to me and to the people around him. So, this was for him. I have been in law enforcement for a long time, been with New Hanover County for a long time, over 23 years as a chaplain, and I have never been treated the way I've been treated by this gentleman and the team here and by you. And I would applaud that. And I would say to this legacy that he's got, even though he's been here a little while, it's been huge and horrendous. And in my mind, he's been the David that came up that said, "Okay, I'll take that. I'll do what's needed to be done," and he's done it. And I appreciate that. And I'll say thank you for what you've done for me and for the citizens. And I just want to leave you with this thought that, you know, a David is within every one of us. And maybe you've already stepped up to the plate and thrown your stone and made a difference. Maybe you haven't had that time yet, but it's coming because there's something inside of all of us that our grandmom or our great-granddaddy or somebody put in us or the man upstairs put in us. And I would just encourage you as citizens, as a body of governing, to always look for that David and always be ready to take that moment in love, whatever you need to do, and do. And I just appreciate the opportunity to be the chaplain of the police department. I wish I could do more. My heart's there. Sometimes I don't physically have the time to do, but I just appreciate the opportunity and try to make a difference in everything I do. And from me to you, thank you. Thank you. Can we pray? there are special times in life that people make a difference. This is one of those times. And I just want to thank you for that. I want to thank you for a guy that came along and answered the call. Lord, I want him to know he'll be missed, very much so. And I pray for the next gentleman that comes along. Our Lord, I pray that he would be that kind of man as well, that he would be wanting to protect and serve, because we know that it's more serving than it is protecting. So, Lord, I just pray your blessings on the city of Runet Rapids, our police department, our fire department, all the men and women, the ones that dig in the holes that the holes are so deep they don't know whether they're coming out or not sometimes. They dig at two and three o'clock in the morning, and they're important, and we appreciate them. So, Lord, I just commend this time to you now, and I just ask for a peaceful time and a good time and prosperous. And I ask your blessings on the town of Runet Rapids, Lord, on everything that they do. I pray they prosper, and I pray that the citizens would come together and continue to love each other and lift each other up and look how they can help and make a difference and how they can be that David, the one to come alongside and do whatever it takes to make a difference, calling out the good and calling out the evil. So, we just ask for your time here tonight and just thank you for what you've done and what you're going to do. In the name of Jesus, I ask these things. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Page. We appreciate those kind words, and I know the police chief will also. Thank you. Okay, we'll have our pledge of allegiance now this time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is the adoption of the business agenda. If someone's ready to do so, we'll take a motion to accept it. Have a motion by Councilman Bill. Do you hear second to his motion?
Second.
Please, it was Ms. Bryant, second by Ms. Bryant. Any more discussion on the matter? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion will be carried and the agenda will be adopted as it is presented. We don't have anyone that signed up for public comment unscheduled this evening, so we move on to item five, which is the approval of the October 1st 24 regular minute meeting minutes. Like to have a motion when someone feels ready to do so.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the October 1st 2024 regular city council meeting minutes as drafted.
This motion is made by Mayor Pro Tem Ms. Bryant.
Second.
Second by Mr. Jackson. Any more discussion on the matter? All being known, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Minutes will be approved. I call Ms. Anderson with a special use permit, which will require a public hearing. Ms. Anderson?
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, we're here to hold a quasi-judicial public hearing, also known as an evidentiary hearing. Quasi-judicial decisions are similar to court decisions, as you must determine whether the evidence provided to you is compliant with the general law for that particular situation. You will use the land use ordinance as your guide. For the development standards for the proposed property, the board must use its best judgment based on factual evidence that's provided to you. Some essentials for conducting an evidentiary hearing are to follow procedures, allow parties with standing to participate, present evidence and provide testimony, ensure all witnesses and parties with standing are sworn in prior to the testimony. Decisions must be based on competent material and substantial evidence, and finally provide written documentation of whether for or against the final decision being made. Some key elements for a special use permit process is to hold the public hearing and receive sworn testimony, complete the evaluation worksheet, and make a final decision. Mr. Ephraim Klein, applicant and owner, has submitted a special use permit for review by council to permit an accessory apartment. The property is located at 402 Cedar Street, which is also identified as Halifax County parcel ID 0908234. The property is approximately .25 acres and is just south of Rochelle Park and east of Cedar and West Horse Streets, and it's located within an R8 residential zoning district. Single-family residences with accessory apartments are deemed permitted with approval of a special use permit within the zone. Should the apartment be permitted, the garage would be converted, or the existing garage on the property, would be converted to an accessory apartment as a family suite and have shared driveway access through the existing driveway that's on site. The apartment would consist of one or two bedrooms, one bath, a possible living room, and a kitchen. The apartment is proposed to be heated by a mini-split heat pump. All applicable trade permits required for conversion would be subject to review and approval by the planning and development department. Special use permits require that we notify our property owners within 100 feet. So, public notices were sent to all property owners within 100 feet of the request, in local news outlet and on the site. All notices encourage citizens to contact the planning and development department for information about the request. One message from an adjacent property owner was received. I returned the call, but I have not heard a call back. When assessing a special use permit application for compliance, you must consider the following. The requested permit is within its jurisdiction according to the table of permissible uses. The accessory apartments are deemed permitted in residential, in R8 residential district with the approval of a special use permit. The request is to convert the existing garage into an accessory apartment. Is the application complete? Yes, the application is complete. Is the development, excuse me, if completed as proposed in the application, the development will comply with all the requirements of the land use ordinance. Staff believes that the development will comply with all the requirements of the land use ordinance. Section two of items to consider: ingress and egress of the lot and proposed structures, especially by pedestrians and automobiles. Staff finds this to be true. We do feel like it will be compliant with the area and suitable to the area. Off-street parking and loading effect on adjacent property in terms of traffic generation, economic impact, noise, glare, and color, or, excuse me, odor, similar to uses permitted in that zoning district. Staff finds little potential of negative impact on neighboring properties. Refuse disposal. Staff finds no likely negative effect should occupants utilize common practices in refuse disposal. The city provides refuse collection, and the city of Runet Rapids regulations shall apply. Utilities are available on site. Staff believes this is true. There are connections in the area already, as is there is established single-family dwelling. The type, dimensions, and character of screening and buffering that are satisfactory to the adjacent properties. Staff believes that screening is to be adequate for use that has no expected outside activity adjacent to residential development. Signs and lighting affect adjacent properties similar to uses permitted. Staff believes that exterior lighting is to be of norm of the similar property. Required yards, open space, and existing trees. Staff believes this is true. The lot is currently developed, and all of that would be adequate for this area. Staff also finds that the special use permit request is to be consistent with the area land use ordinances, such as the comprehensive plan. City council has some actions tonight in regards to the special use permit. There are four key factors that you have to consider. One, will the property materially endanger the public health or safety? Staff believes, or, excuse me, will not materially endanger the public health or safety. Staff believes this is true. The applicant shall be required to comply with all state and local codes and ordinances. An assessment of the previously referenced seven items used to evaluate the areas of concern indicate no specific endangerment to public health or safety. Will not suitably injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. Staff believes this is probably true. Staff finds no specific reasons for potential negative effects on the value of adjoining or abutting property. The use will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located. Staff believes this is true. The proposed use will be in residential in nature and in character with its existing surrounding land uses. The use will be in general conformity with the comprehensive development plan, thoroughfare plan, or other officially adopted by city council. Staff finds this to be true. The proposed use will agree with the policies of the comprehensive development plan, thoroughfare plan, as well as the land use ordinance and other officially adopted plans of the city. The comprehensive plan future land use map designates this area as suitable for medium-density residential. The property is located within existing city limits, and staff believes it is in conformity with the comprehensive development policies. Subject to your questions, this concludes my presentation. If there are no questions for me, it would be an appropriate time to open the public hearing and ask questions to people in favor or against.
Okay. In relation to what the clerk just said, at this time, I would declare that public hearing be open for anyone who would like to speak on this matter. Come forward to the podium, state your name and where you live, if you'd like to speak. Say whatever you, you know, whatever you'd like. You're the applicant.
Very briefly, but I've only moved, lived here for about four years, but...
Name and address.
Oh, Ephraim Klein. I'm the applicant that's applying for the additional dwelling unit at 402 Cedar Street. And, what else do you guys want to know? What else do you guys want to know? Besides, I've only been here for like four years, but I've grown to like the city, and that's why I decided to buy a house. And circumstances changed, and I think, I figured I'd need a little bit more space. But fortunately, there's already an existing building with my garage that's attached to it, so I just want to expand on that just a little bit more. it, so I just want to expand on that just a little bit more, so I can have a little bit more space.
Does anybody have any question of the applicant?
So, I'm going to ask a question. So, this is, is not connected to the actual building?
No.
But you wanted to have a two-bedroom apartment?
Yes.
And you are, and you presently live in the dwelling near the house?
In the house.
And you say you wanted to have more space, is this for family or...?
Yeah, for me, and for my mom also.
Okay.
Yeah.
If, if I might ask a question to the city manager or the planning director, maybe, if the current owner was to sell or move or whatever, and someone else, has it got anything to do with it being a family member? That's what, what I mean, can...
Special use permits run with the property, and so regardless of ownership, the approval for an accessory apartment remains with the land itself.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right.
I just need to know something about the plans that he submitted. At the time he submitted his plans, I wasn't here, but because of an emergency I had to move to this area. Now, he's agreed for me to, um, to remodel the place so that it would be comfortable for me, and I brought two grandchildren with me, great-grandchildren with me. And we want, instead of two bedrooms, to make, one bedroom is big enough to subdivide so that they can have their own personal space. Their, one is 14 and the other one is 10, boy and a girl. So, would this be okay, or will we have to resubmit plans or what?
Uh, you're the planning director.
So, when it comes to the plans and everything that were submitted, what we have to do first is get approval for the special use permit application. So, this is for the apartment in general. For plans, all of that would be reviewed by the Planning and Development Department, whatever that ends up being, and then we would review by building code to see what is applicable and what applies and how to accommodate it.
Okay. And we also plan, because the unit, the garage is not attached to the house, we intend to attach it so that we will have a breeze way that will hold a little laundry room.
Okay. All right. It's not, if, if the permit is approved, then we can absolutely do that.
Is anyone else that wishes to speak on the matter before we close the public hearing? If not, I would declare that public hearing be closed. All right, we've got the last two pages. So now, we move on to the findings of the facts.
Yes. In your worksheet, you'll, you'll find, or, excuse me, in your packet, you'll find an evaluation worksheet. Listed there are the findings of facts. At this time, it would be appropriate for council to determine if these are true. All of them would have to be true in order to pass.
Okay. Okay, we're on to section 3 and highlighted page, everybody find the page. Okay, item A is, is the consensus of the city council that the requested permit will not materially endanger the public health or safety.
Are we looking for a motion?
We're looking for a motion on A, 3A.
I make a motion, Mr. Mayor. Based on the public hearing testimony and the foregoing staff report dated October 30, 2024, it is the consensus of the city council that the requested permit will not materially endanger the public health or safety.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Steinbach. He's second to his motion. Second by Mr. Bell. Is there any more discussion on the matter? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion will be approved. Item B, is it the consensus of the city council that the requested permit would not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property?
I make a motion based on public hearing testimony and the foregoing staff report dated October 30, 2024. It is the consensus of the city council that the requested permit will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property.
Okay, motion by Councilman Jackson. Do you hear, second to his motion?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bryant. Any more discussion on the matter? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Item 3B will be approved. Is it consensus of the city council that the requested permit will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion based on the public hearing testimony and the foregoing staff report dated October 30, 2024. It is the consensus of the city council that the requested permit will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located.
Okay, motion on the floor by Councilman Strickland. Second to his motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Jackson. Any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion 3B would be approved, 3C, I'm sorry, would be approved also. 3D, is it in consensus? It is the consensus of the city council that the requested permit will be in general conformity with the Comprehensive Development Plan, Thoroughfare Plan, or other plan officially adopted by the city council.
I'd like to make a motion based upon the public hearing testimony and the foregoing staff report dated October 30, 2024. It is consensus of the city council that the request permit be in general conformity with the Comprehensive Development Plan, Thoroughfare Plan, or other plan officially adopted by the city council.
Okay, motion on the floor by Mr. Bell. Do you hear, second to his motion?
Second.
Second by Councilman Steinbach. Is there any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. 3D would be approved also. So, we will move on to section 4, which is the final decision. As we have voted, all the motions above have been found true, so we can move on to, to the final decision. And there's a motion there if someone feels so led to make it.
I'd like to make a motion based on the public hearing testimony and the foregoing staff report dated October 30, 2024. It is consensus of the city council that the requested special use permit be granted to Ephraim Klein for an accessory dwelling located at 402 Cedar Street with the set conditions set forth by the land use ordinance.
Okay, the motion on the floor by Councilman Bell. Do we hear, second to his motion?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jackson. Is there any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion will be approved, and the permit would be granted.
Thank you.
So, their next step will be back, to get back in touch with you about what they, what they want to do so far as the building code and that type thing.
Yes. At this point, what we would do is I would officially type up the special use permit application to follow the regulations that govern the land. At that point, you can submit plans and...
Thank you. We have several budget ordinances, and Finance Director not being here tonight, City Manager will present this information to us.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first item of business is consideration of Ordinance 2024.31 to amend the budget to receive a $3,000 donation intended for the purchase of a flock camera to be placed on River Road. The resident intends to renew and pay the subscription annually. Subject to any questions, ask for motion to adopt Ordinance 2024.31.
Okay, you have a motion there before you. Someone would like to make that motion?
I'd like to consider a motion to adopt Budget Amendment Ordinance Number 2024.31 in the amount of $3,000 for the installation of a flock camera on River Road.
Okay, motion on the floor by Councilman Bell.
Second.
Second by Councilman Strickland. Any more discussion on the matter? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion will be approved. Next is a budget ordinance on some unauthorized substance taxes.
Yes, sir. Ordinance Number 2024.32 in the amount of $7,082.66 was received from the OSC Unauthorized Substance Abuse Tax, and that is a special revenue fund directed specifically for law enforcement purposes. So, subject to any additional questions, ask for approval of Ordinance 2024.32.
I make a motion to consider a motion to adopt Budget Amendment Ordinance Number 2024.32 in the amount of $7,082.66 for OSC Unauthorized Substance Tax.
Right. Motion, motion on the floor by Councilman Jackson and second by Council, Mayor Pro Tim Bryant. Is there any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, no. The motion will be approved.
Good evening. Good evening. We would like for you to consider an ordinance that you have in your packet. It is for slow-moving traffic on Roanoke Avenue for the Christmas Parade. The DOT has requested that we acquire a permit to have slow-moving traffic. It's very similar to the road closure ordinance that we had to do for the Christmas Parade. This will not close the road, but it will give us the permit to have that slow-moving traffic, and that is Ordinance Number 2024.33, and is attached for your review and consideration. That will also be on Friday, December 6, from 5:30 to 9:30 during our event.
Okay, does anybody have any questions of Recreation Director? If not, to approve this, we need the motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 2024.33 declaring use of a road for slow-moving traffic associated with Christmas on the avenue.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Bryant, second, second by Mr. Steinbach. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion will be approved.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Chief Gahan?
Good evening. Coming to you with item 7D. Just a little historical fact upon this, it was brought to our attention by Director Daultry about Parks and Recreation wanted to conduct a bow-and-arrow class at the Parks and Recreation TJ Davis Building. And we started looking at Chapter 131, specifically Section 13104 prohibiting weapons like a bow-and-arrow, like a firearm, like a deadly weapon on city property. We instantly noticed that with the, the way 131.04 read, that they would not be able to hold this bow-and-arrow class on their property because of the way that the ordinance was written. And we also realized that with the cadre of classes that we do for the public, our own firing range, we couldn't invite anybody from the public to bring a firearm for a firearm safety event to our firing range the way that the, the ordinance was written. So, if you'll notice on the back page, Ordinance 2024.34, we have, we have actually met with City Attorney Davis and introduced line 5 that we would like to add to this ordinance, which 5 reads, persons participating in a City of Roanoke Rapids sanctioned educational event that are under direct supervision of City of Roanoke Rapids employees that are certified to teach safety and education courses related to weapons. Example, archery course taught by the Roanoke Rapids Parks and Recreation Certified Staff, firearm safety course taught by the Roanoke Rapids Police Department Sworn Staff, et cetera. We would like you to take into consideration a motion to add line 5 to Chapter 131, Section 131.04, dealing with this particular ordinance, so we can avoid any kind of issues in the future, and would allow the Parks and Recreation to actually have this bow-and-arrow class taught on their property, would also allow us to invite citizens and other community groups that we're doing weapon training for, or some kind of event like that on the firing range property to, to occur.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for the chief? If not, we need a motion to approve this.
I'd like to make a motion to consider a motion to adopt Ordinance 2024.34, Men in the City of Roanoke Rapids Code of Ordinances, Chapter 131, Section 131.04.
Okay, motion by Councilman Jackson?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bell. Any more discussion on the matter? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, no. The motion will be approved. Thank you, Chief Gahan. Next is the City Manager, her report.
I have one more agenda item here, item 7E, just prior to my report, but consideration of the CDBG Neighborhood Revitalization Program Administrative Service Contract. Back in the springtime, we were awarded FY 2022 Community Development Block Grant for the Neighborhood Revitalization Program, and this is a federal program that is directed through the North Carolina Department of Commerce Rural Economic Development Division and subject to the HUD and administrative guidance under these programs. But contingent upon this award, we are required to recruit and retain an administrative consultant to, for lack of a better term, provide a turnkey job in the, in the construction aspect of it, the housing rehabilitation, and all of the other policies and things that are required for the federal and state compliance. Twice, we have conducted competitive request-for-proposal processes. The first time, we received one response, and that was from Insight Planning and Development. And based on the administrative guidance rules, we had to conduct a second request for proposals, additional costs, but those costs can be absorbed into the grant. But after the second round of RFPs, we received a total of three proposals for consideration, and those were received on, by Friday, went out before this was completed. But Insight Planning and Development was the highest-ranked consulting firm that responded to this, followed by McDavid and Associates, and then Eli Patrick and Company. The Insight Planning and McDavid were competitive with each other, but Insight stood above and beyond with its designations for being a certified historically underutilized business and verified service-disabled veteran-owned small-business statuses. Insight Planning and Development has, the team that works for them have worked and provided administrative services to the City of Roanoke Rapids for 20 or more years, so their experience is, is valued here in town.
Can you tell us at this time, does it say in, in the, the packet or the contract that we would be entering into, what would be the amount that administrative services would take out of the grant?
There are different categories, there's different line items for it, but the total amount ends up in the, in the proposed contract, it's just over 100,000, but that includes other housing activities that are required as a part of it. So, all of the funds are allowed under the grant program, but to say the contract value and, but it's all, like I said, there's... and, um, but it's all, like I said, there's no city funds involved in it, but I believe the, the proposed number was, it was over a hundred thousand dollars, but all eligible.
Around 10%?
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm.
And this, this wouldn't be a question just a, a, a state by me, it could be a question. I mean, is there, it is a question. Is there any way that, um, I know we, we've been doing this for a pretty long time and, um, we've, we've gotten several million dollars, uh, from, from CBDG grants. Is there any way that we can, uh, get, and addresses of homes that have been, uh, remodeled and redone and just to see, you know, this one was done last year, this one was done five years ago, this one was done 10 years ago?
Sure, be glad to.
You know, just, cause, cause a lot of people say, well, what did they do with that money? Let me tell them, they rehab houses. Um, doesn't, doesn't the person that lives in the house have to live there about eight or nine years before the grant is, uh, forgiven?
In this, in this particular program, there is an eight-year commitment. You have to be income qualifying and you have to own your home and occupy it. Um, in the grant administrative services, there are legal services included in that where, um, a deed is, or there's a document, um, recorded against the property. So after every two years, 25% is forgiven until after eight years then. So that, in that case, potential person, if they were to pass away or if their, their situation would change and their ownership would change, they wouldn't have to pay it back if the next occupant was a qualifying applicant. But if not, um, it would pop up during any, um, transaction, any real estate transaction where the ownership would change, it would show up.
Mr. Bell, you have a question?
And so also too, looking at this, uh, say like the person is usually a lot of these grants, uh, these renovations, like people probably are elderly people, a lot of time I see. What would happen, let's say if the person became incapacitated and had to be moved to a nursing home? And then, of course, you look, looking at funds to support their, being a resident there, what could they come in and, uh, uh, you know, ask that this be sold so that, you know, they can get money for the person to pay the bill?
We would have to check with the Department of Commerce on that, cause with the federal uniform guidance and the HUD, um, is any, I don't know the exact answer to that, but, um, but we understand that, Eric, it's understood that certain special circumstances happen, but, um, again, I.
Cause that came across my mind looking at this because as we know, if I look around, hell, I'm not trying to pick a few names, but, you know, we're, we're senior citizens, most of us, and we probably have experienced someone being in that situation that they had to be, uh, physically, you know, relocated to a nursing home and then they start looking to funds to pay for their care. And they start looking at their assets and come in and have to pay for it.
I'm not aware of any exemptions that would apply, other than if the next owner of the home were, it would be permissible if the next owner of the home was income qualifying for the program. And we've actually seen this for, um, we've seen families benefit from this. If you have a one-income family and they have several children, um, we've seen, we've seen beneficiaries in those types of situations too. Um, but again, it is a decision that, um, the homeowners that are interested in the program, they go through the legal counseling and so forth, and so they understand upfront what those consequences would be in the document. So it shouldn't, we shouldn't have any surprises.
Could that maybe be a, uh, agenda item in the next meeting or two where you can check on it and find out?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Okay, now I think we can move on to your report.
Actually, I need a motion, uh, first for the consulting contract award.
I'm sorry.
She needs a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Make a motion right there, yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a CBPG in our administrative services contract hereby awarded to the most qualified consultant based on proposal evaluation and score completed by the city administration.
Okay, the motion is by Councilman Stainback. Second by, uh, Councilman Strickland. Is there any more discussion? There is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the motion will be approved.
I just want to start out by saying I want to extend gratitude to our staff, the departments, um, that were all involved in the Halloween activities. A report I've looked at earlier today showed that, um, on Thursday evening, over 2,200 people, uh, attended, uh, the Trump or Treat activities, um, hosted by the city on Halloween evening. And that's a lot of kids in a safe environment and we hope that everyone had a good time. Um, on Saturday, November the 23rd, the city will host a library dedication in memory of, uh, former city attorney Gilbert Chichester. Uh, this upcoming Monday, uh, November 11th, city offices will be closed in observance of Veterans Day. The city is finalizing with the Upper Coastal Plain Council's of Government, a Brownfield Coalition Grant Application, and our specific part would address the interstate storage of the former Rosemary, or excuse me, Roanoke Mill Number Two here at 501 Jackson Street. That would complete around, um, if funded, all of the former mill sites in town would be part of that program if we're able to get that far. Um, it's a very competitive program. Um, the state, or excuse me, the EPA anticipates awarding just over 20 of these coalition applications. And we're going for the, um, application this year with the COG. And we should find out after the new year if we are awarded or not. Uh, and speaking of grants, um, our staff are very busy. There's several funding opportunities out there and we've had a chance to, uh, meet with the North Carolina Hometown Strong Program as well as, um, the Blue Cross Blue Shield, um, regional representative. It's not a insurance salesperson, is a person that is interested in trying to develop those partnerships and help find opportunities as well. There's a lot of things going on and our staff are diligently looking for these grant opportunities to help meet the needs that we have. Later this month, um, Thanksgiving cards will be distributed to all city, all full-time employees and permanent part-time employees for Thanksgiving for $25 Walmart gift cards that was included in the budget. Leaf season has begun as of November the 1st, so loose leaf collection from the leaf vacuum truck will be collected and they'll finish out the season in February, um, by going down the alleys to collect leaves there. The Toyota dealership, uh, the new building, um, Premier Boulevard indicates a potential grand opening date at Thanksgiving. And plans for the McCrory Building have been submitted for review. Uh, this has been an ongoing process through the, um, through the state and federal historic property reviewed so that the developer can obtain the tax credits for that, um, project. The Dixon Building next to it, um, just opened earlier this month, or excuse me, in October, and welcome addition to the avenue for the med spa there. Um, subject to your questions, that concludes my report for the evening.
Okay, does anybody have any questions as a manager? If not, is there any other business that needs to come before the council tonight? If not, I call for a motion to adjourn. Motion, uh, by Mr. Stainback, second by Mr. Bell, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no, motion adjourned.